So I haven't got the software myself. So if you, but normally if you've got, if Campbell's got the Dr. Sign or Adobe, then it sends you a file.
Ready for kickoff? Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular planning commission meeting of the city of Campbell, June 28th, 2022. Mister, Mister Clerk, Madam Clerk, if you'd like to have a vocal call, please.
Commissioner Rogan.
Present.
Commissioner Scissor.
Here.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Here.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Here.
Commissioner Craig. Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Present.
Chair Chee.
Present. Thank you. So moving on to approval of the minutes for May the 24th and June the 14th. Have people had a chance to review? And if so, do I have anybody proposing? Motion to accept?
I'd move to accept the minutes for May 24th and June 14th.
Thank you. Okay.
I was at one, but not the other side. I would have stayed for one.
Okay, we were absent from.
I was absent from June 14th.
Okay, so we can do two separate motions.
Maybe, maybe.
Sure, I'll, I'll move to accept the minutes for May 24th.
Second.
I'll second.
Yeah, could we have a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Scissor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig. Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Aye.
Chair Chee.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the second set of minutes, June 14th. Do I hear somebody propose?
I have moved to accept the minutes of June 14th as proposed. Thank you.
I'll second.
Just one, there was one item at the very, very end of that agenda that said, "We will take this up at the next planning commission meeting on June 14th." And I think that should have, that should have been June 28th, or, or actually July 12th, but it should have been, I think, should have been for today. So if you could take a look at it, see if I'm correct. That was the only correction I could see in it. Otherwise, I thought it was okay. I don't know what page I saw that on.
I caught it. Robbie Stood, Community Development Director, page five says July 12th, but we can amend that to be today's date since that's flexible. That is the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well done, Commissioner O'Neil. Few diligence on the minutes.
Yeah, big badge.
I'll give a vote, please.
Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Scissor.
abstain.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Aye.
Chair Chee.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to communications and any agenda modifications or postponement. Community Development Director.
Yes, Robbie Stood. I usually wait for personnel announcement to the end, but just want to let you know who's in the room. So I'm very happy to announce Clerk in this evening is our new administrative analyst, Ken Ramirez, and you'll be seeing a lot of him. So just want to introduce him this evening. He's been shadowing our city clerk who sadly is outgoing. Dusty Kristofferson has been helping to train, but Ken will be here to support you going forward. As to the agenda tonight, just a note, we do have a desk item on item number two. I believe that's the White Oaks item. And also a desk item on item number three. They came in pretty late. Want to make sure you caught your attention to it. This is the library item. And no other modifications or changes. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And on behalf of the Planning Commission, welcome, Ken. Looking forward to working with you. So moving on to the all request section. This is the point on the agenda where members of the public may address the commission items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission. So open, do we see anybody? Or anybody online? Okay, thank you. Close that. So moving on to the agenda items for tonight, we have three agenda items. Maybe if I just can explain the process, I can see members of the public in the audience. For each agenda item, I'll read out the item. After which staff will then present on that particular item. The commission will ask questions if they have any of the staff and I'll open up the public hearing. Applicants will be invited to come and present or talk. We allocate five minutes for applicants. You don't need to present, but you're more than welcome to do so. And then we'll invite members of the public both here and online. And we would request two minutes for any public comment. We cannot answer questions. Staff will record questions and address them afterwards, but the commission is unable to answer questions that are raised. From that, we'll close the public section and then go on to the planning commission discussion. So we'll do that for each agenda item. Before I go on to the first item, do I have any disclosures from fellow commissioners here?
Only on the first item or any item?
Any item.
The architect that is presenting on the third item I had worked for and five years ago, I am no longer having business affiliation with them, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I have a disclosure then. The architect that I believe is on the third item, is that LPA on the third item? I've, I've had a project with them. Not directly, but we're working on the same project. So do I need to accuse myself?
Possibly, maybe we could take a moment to discuss that.
Sure, absolutely. You and I? Okay, sorry.
Will you please bear with us a second? I can play, I will play Ireland in the sky again. Islands. Like your shirt. Oh, very summary.
After some consultation, it appears that Commissioner Kamkar can proceed with that.
Thank you. Any more disclosures? Apologies for missing. Okay.
I should also note on item three, in the past, I've spoken with the Audubon Society who sent a desk item this evening, but I'm not directly in any relationship with their organization.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the first item for tonight, PLN-2021-206, continued public hearing to consider the request of Bilal Elta. Apologies for rescuing your name probably. Atlas General Construction for property located at 388 Hatchet Court to allow an approximately 403 square feet addition to a single-family house resulting in a far of 0.5. The application on the consideration includes a site and architectural review permit, file number PLN-2021-206. Staff is recommending the site and be deemed categorically exempt from SEQA. Planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Project Planner Tracy, Tracy Tam. Please, Tracy.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. It's Tracy Tam, Associate Planner. And the project site is located at 388 Hatchet Court, just at the end of the cul-de-sac there, sort of in the yellow box, which is a standard, it's also zoned R16, which is a standard single-family residential zoning district with the general plan land use designation of low-density residential. The lot is approximately 7,199 square feet and the site is surrounded by residential uses. And the project before you tonight is an approximately 403 square foot addition to an existing single-family house of the 403 square feet, approximately 144 square feet. It's on the ground floor and that's to increase the size of the existing living room. And then approximately 259 square feet is on the second floor and it's to increase the size of the master bedroom. The addition will put the floor area ratio at 0.5. And per the code, anything over 0.45 floor area ratio does require a site and architectural review permit to be approved by the planning commission. Just to give some background about this subdivision on Hatchet Court, about half the homes on this cul-de-sac are already over 0.45 FAR. And the other half, and that's, there's eight totals, so four and four, the other half are exactly at 0.45 FAR. The subdivision was approved in 1996 and then the subsequent homes were approved in 1997. The 0.45 FAR requirement was put into place after these homes were constructed. It was part of the 2004 municipal code update. And so that's why half the homes are already over 0.45. They weren't required to go through this process. The project site currently has the smallest FAR at 0.44 of the existing homes in the court. With the addition, the single-family house will be about 3,567 square feet with an FAR of 0.5. So here's some elevations of the home. The top picture you see is the current front elevation and the bottom picture illustrates the proposed changes. And you can see the areas in the yellow box that indicate the proposed changes. So on the ground floor, though it's a little hard to tell on the elevation, the box to the right is where the living rooms where they're pushing it out. There's also an entryway feature that they're also pushing out as well. And in the rear, you can see the second floor addition. Which you can see better on this slide. So here's the rear elevation. The image on the left is the existing single-family house on the rear. And then the image on the right illustrates the addition on the second floor, sort of boxed in that yellow box there. Overall, the project is designed to be integrated into the neighborhood and is architecturally compatible with existing house. The building floor materials are more traditional in nature, which does fit into the neighborhood. And the second floor addition is set back from the first floor, which does help with the massing, kind of obscures the addition. And it allows it to sort of blend in. This is the proposed second floor floor plan. The yellow box is indicated where the addition is proposed. So the area is supposed to be, is proposed to be a new master bathroom and a master closet. And this item was brought to the site and architectural review committee in May of this year. The committee didn't have any concerns regarding the request to increase the FAR from 0.44 to 0.5. And Steph also hasn't received any kind of feedback from the neighbors on this application. Steph does recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the sudden architectural review permit to allow an approximately 403 square foot addition to an existing single-family house resulting in a floor area ratio of 0.5. And that does conclude our staff presentation available for any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions for staff, please, Commissioner Craig?
Yeah, Tracy, just real quick, I know you mentioned that SARK had already heard this. In the SARK staff report, you asked them about the windows, second floor windows. And I saw, I just saw the drawings that you just showed. So I know there's a couple more windows and was there some worry about the privacy issue with those windows in the back? And, and where do those back windows look? Where are they looking at? I'm not quite sure.
And so the windows in the rear do face residential uses to the rear, but there are a fair bit of landscaping on that area. So there is some obscurity. I just, I brought the item to the commission if there was any kind of feedback on making the windows smaller in case there was privacy concerns from the commission, but staff didn't receive any from the public. And given that the rear, the location is only new windows because the lot isn't traditionally shaped, it's kind of angled in the back. So part of the new windows were set back actually quite further from the rear property line and with the existing landscaping in the back screening, staff didn't have any concerns about privacy.
Good.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed the chimney is gone, you know, from the second. Is that because of code? Requires the chimneys to be gone or?
It's not part of the, it's not part of planning's code for chimneys to be gone. I rather think it was a design decision and a usability decision from the applicant. Perhaps the applicant to touch on that particular point during the presentation.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think that's a great move, you know, I think, you know, it's wonderful. And when I visited the site, I did see the privacy that Tracy's talking about. You know, I didn't feel the windows will be overpowering or will be, there will be privacy issues, if you will. So, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
This is a somewhat broader question. I was surprised to see in the packet that our FAR limits date only to 2004, which is why a lot of the buildings in that cul-de-sac have higher floor area ratios. Can you give a little more context on that?
So it's my understanding that in 2004, it was a phased approach to update the zoning ordinance and that's probably the time the zoning ordinance was changed more dramatically than it was in the past. And so before, there wasn't any kind of recognition of regulating floor error ratio for single-family at all. At least for the prior codes pre-2004 that I have looked at. But in the 2004 update, that's something that was regulated. There was a note from staff that if I recall, that the draft version of it mentioned that the FAR for a single family should be 0.45, but as far as the reasoning behind that, I don't believe I saw it in the contents of that staff report for that municipal code change.
Thank you.
If I may add though, it is standard practice for cities to regulate FARs for both residential and commercial properties. So perhaps it was, you know, wanting to, to regulate that for residential, just because the city hadn't done that in the past.
Understood. I was just surprised that, I had assumed that we'd had that regulation for, you know, forever. And to realize it was this reason, that's surprising. Thank you for the history.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more questions, I'll open up for public comment. Would the applicant here like to speak? Please. Yes.
Hello, everyone.
If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Ali Kareem. I know you have Bilal, so he's the contractor. And we are the owner. So I just want to say, I don't have any more details to add. I think Tracy did a great job. And just want to say thank you for considering our project. My family and I love the house, the court and the city. So, you know, we've decided to invest in here and stay local with our growing family. And I think you had a question about the chimney. First of all, that's something that we don't really use. You know, we have a lot of little kids. So, and also just to stay green, right? So I think that's one of the reasons that we wanted to do that. Other than that, I mean, if you guys have any other questions or any more details I need to add. I'm right here.
I think we're good. Thank, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions? Anybody online? Nope. Okay, so I'll close the public session and hand it to the commission. Commissioner Rivlin, with your great, great trendy shirt.
Thank you. I think it's a suitable project and I, I think the findings help us understand that the neighborhood character and existing FAR of 0.5 is typical for this street. So I've, I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Sisso.
Yes, I reviewed this as part of the SARK committee and at the time I found it, it fit in well with the others, other houses on the street. And since the number of them are over 0.50, I saw no problem with going to 0.50 on the fire. So it, it looks fine. It looked fine to me then and I'm in support of the project as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Ostrowski.
I'm also supportive of the project. Looks very nice and complies with all the regulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually checked out the site before reading the staff report. And when I got to the site, I'm looking at it and going, oh, geez. Subjectively, I'm thinking they're going to shoehorn it into that one little open spot in the front, but then I saw the design and everything and, and I completely agree. It fits in very well. The second floor setback is great, minimizes the visual bulk and the mass scene and the, and the FAR is fine. And I think it's, I think it's a good design and I really liked the interior shots. Really, very nice. So I'm in support.
Thank you.
I'm also in supportive. I think the architect did a great job of fitting everything, you know. You didn't make it too big, didn't make it too close, didn't make it, you just did it right, you know, it, it's a pretty tight site, you know, with odd dimensions, you know, so I think it's a great job. It's a, again, good move getting rid of the fireplace, you know, I think. You know, that's, that's a healthy move for your family. And I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
As mentioned, SARK had no objections. I was also on SARK for this. The higher FAR is, as staff notes, in character for the neighborhood. City could in general use more bedrooms. And I'd like to thank the applicant for bringing the renderings. They provided very, it made it a lot easier to understand exactly what the changes would be. It made it a lot easier to visualize them. So thank you. I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. I'm in support too. So do we hear a motion?
Sure, I'll just make a motion that the planning commission, without the resolution referenced in attention, one proving a condition is permanent PLN 2021-206 to allow an approximately 403 square foot addition to a single-family house resulting in an FAR of 0.50 and finding the product categorically exempt under section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second motion. Thank you, Commissioner Rivlin. If we could have a vote, please.
Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Scissor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Aye.
Chair Chee.
Aye.
So that's carried unanimously and this action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. So thank you. Good luck with your extension. Moving on to the second item, PLN-2021-217, public hearing to consider the request of John Rové Studio Benevente Architects for property located at 1506 White Oaks Road to allow for a new motor vehicle rent, new motor vehicle renting use within an existing commercial building. The application on the consideration includes a conditional use permit, file number PLN 2021-217. Staff is recommending the site and be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. Planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Project Planner Tracy Tam. Please, Tracy.
Thank you. And so the project site is located at 1506 White Oaks Road, shown in the yellow box on the slide. It does have a zoning district and general plan designation of light industrial. Do you have some background in the site? A site and architectural review permit was approved by the planning commission in 1975. It was for an office and bus/van repair shop. And the previous tenant to occupy the site, I think was Durham Transportation, which is a student transportation provider. To the north, there are other auto-oriented uses, like car repair shops to get to the north and then to the south and east are existing residential. Um, to the north, there are other auto oriented uses, like car repair shops, um, to get to the north and then to the south and east are existing residential uses. Now, the project before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow for a new motor vehicle rental use within an existing building. With this proposal, there is limited site work proposed. Um, the site work is mostly limited to the creation of landscaped areas for parking lot trees and then restriping um, some areas in the front for an accessible path of travel to the building. The building does have limited work as well. Um, it's mostly related to creating a bathroom on the ground floor and then also a car washing area, also on the ground floor. Now, the proposed hours of operation are shown on the slide. Um, so for up, for staff operational hours at seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday, eight AM to two PM Saturday, and then for business public facing hours, um, at seven thirty AM to six PM Monday through Friday and nine AM to two PM on Saturday, and the business will be closed on Sunday. And the um, car rental operator is offering free delivery of rental vehicles uh, to the customer as a convenience. So on the slide is the proposed first floor floor plan to the left and the proposed site plan to the right. Um, you notice that the newly created bathroom is sort of on the lower left-hand corner, um, and then the car washing areas to sort of the upper right-hand corner. Um, for the site plan, you'll see notations in red there where the customers can park and then where the parking lot trees will be proposed. Uh, so you should have received a desk item. Um, there is one proposed change to conditional approval number seven. Um, the change to this condition um, of approval is related to a rewarding of a standard condition. Um, really to make it clear that the outdoor storage of vehicles is allowed since it is a car rental facility and staff is supportive um, of these changes. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow for a new motor uh, vehicle renting use um, as provided as the desk item. And this does conclude staff's presentation. Here for any questions?
Okay, thank you, thank you Tracy. Uh, any questions?
Uh, help, help educate me on the um, on the code. Does our city have, say anything about car washes that require recycled water? And, and perhaps we can ask the applicant if they would be recycling water, but the plans call for drainage to the sanitary sewer. So I just want to know what the code says.
Um, the, the zoning code doesn't have provisions for using um, recycled water.
Not, not necessarily uh, using recycled water, but requirement of a car wash to recycle water.
Oh, to recycle water, I see. Um, the, the planet, the zoning code doesn't have regulations that you need to recycle the water from the car wash. But I don't know if the applicant is in, intended to, to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just a question. I, I don't know if by having on there, you're going to lock yourself in, but on these hours, uh, the operational staff and business hours at the end of the day are the same, six PM and two PM. And usually we give them more time to get out of the building. So you know, you close down the business and then isn't there a half an hour, hour that? Yeah, I, I, I don't know if, if that's a, an error or uh, or whether the enterprise would want more time at the end of the day to clear their staff out, but I just want to bring your attention because they do give themselves a half an hour in the morning before business hours. So whether there would be time in the evening for, for the staff to be there after they close the business. So I just wanted to bring it up as a question whether or not that, that, that should be adjusted before, you know, rather than being locked into those hours. Um, that's actually all I have.
So that was, uh, the hours of operation are proposed by the applicant. Staff doesn't see any issue with extending the hours since even if you were to extend it, let's say instead of six, it's six thirty, um, it would make sense because the auto uses north of it generally operate within those hours as well. So staff doesn't see any kind of um, potential impacts resulting in a half hour extension for operational staff to vacate the building.
So I just wanted to know if, if we vote on the, if we vote on it with the hours that are stipulated, are they locked into that or can? You know, I mean, they can a- answer whether they want it for six thirty or seven o'clock or two thirty, three o'clock on Saturdays, but, but you know, if, if, if their intention really was to get longer hours, I, I'd want that to be amendment to so that we don't lock them into those hours if that's not what they want. Good, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, on the same, on the same subject, is it, is it usual to, like, my understanding of the hours of operation is that those are the hours in which the applicant would at any point want to operate. I'm just wondering, like, the applicant is aware that they would have to come back for another, uh, change to their conditional use permit if they wanted to say operate on Sundays?
Right, because it is, um, but it is on a condition of approval, so they would need to abide by all conditions of approval. And so any kind of modification to the condition approval would require um, a conditional use permit modification.
Okay, is it, is it usual here that we have sort of like shrink wrapped the, the hours in which people can, like, the business can operate? I would, I would assume that um, like, I'm just see what the specific hours listed are. Um,
seven to six.
Sorry?
Seven to six.
Okay, so the, they, like, the hours would, I would assume that for something like this, we would set the hours to seven thirty to six, seven days a week or something like that. And the applicant may not plan to operate on those, but that seems like it would provide more flexibility in that I, I guess it would seem odd if the applicant either couldn't operate on, like, it wasn't worth it to operate on later on Saturdays because of this, you know, they would have to go through this whole process. Or that they would go through this whole process for what's kind of a, you know, minor change to the business. Maybe that, that's my note. Apart from that, um, this looks like, like, pretty much the exact kind of use we'd want to have for a light industrial parcel and uh,
Maybe one is, because of those for the.
Oh, sorry, this is questions for staff. Thank you, Chair. Uh, no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kimko?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so my question is about parking. You know, I actually live in that area and I take that street to go up and come back, you know, and parking is really scarce, you know, all the, those automotive businesses nearby use the street for parking, you know, and so um, by seven in the morning, seven thirty in the morning, all those spaces are taken, you know. So, and you can only park on one side of White Oaks, not on the other side. So my question is, um, will the gates be there? So if somebody wants to drop off the car and they can't find parking, you know, on White Oaks, will the, would, would there be gates there, you know, or can they just drop the car inside the lot?
Uh, well, the, the customer is expected to bring the car back onto the lot. Um, the site plan does indicate where the customer should park. Um, but enterprise, the, or I should say the car, the proposed car rental operator um, does anticipate sixty to seventy percent of the cars being dropped off. Um, and so they will be in a, they would be bringing the cars to the customer.
Right, but, but you know, I, I guess I need to clarify my point. I was talking about after-hours drop-off, when they're closed and a customer wants to drop off the car. Um, you know, I can, you know, will the gates be closed, which means they can't drop off the car inside the lot and? Um, I mean, it, it's, it's the after-hours question. So how would the drop-off workout?
I would have to ask the applicant to see how they intend on addressing that or if they wouldn't allow for after-hours drop-off or a one-off situation, will they arrange with the customer? Um, or if they would pick up the vehicle, I think I would have to direct that question to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. There is a U-Haul, you know, very close to there and their gates are open, so he can drop off the cars after hours inside the lot if you have to.
Yeah. Do you, do you know, Tracy, do you know if there's a gate there now? If there is a gate?
Correct, there are two gates.
Oh, there are gates?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and the gates showed up on the, on the um, drawings as well, that's why.
Yeah. Any more questions? No, okay, I'll open it up to uh, public comment. Um, would the applicant like to come forward? And if you could state your name and address, please.
Yes. Uh, good evening. Uh, Brandon Hilton, property development facility manager for Enterprise Rent-A-Car. All right, good evening, commission members. Thank you for ta- or for this opportunity to discuss our application for a car and truck rental, the proposed fifteen oh six White Oaks property. Uh, this parcel is owned light industrial, as Tracy mentioned, which conditionally allows for car rental use and has been used by Durham School of Transportation since nineteen seventy five as a school bus transportation plus bus repair service. And is currently surrounded by auto-related uses and things of the like that are much similar to the auto rental business. Uh, we are currently planning on relocating our current Campbell location as well as the business for our Los, Los Gatos location and bringing in a new truck rental division that has not been to Campbell before. Uh, this will ultimately increase the tax revenue provided to the city as well as bring in new jobs in the city with our truck rental division. We're excited to continue, continue our longstanding uh, relationship with the city of Campbell because we've actually been here for over forty years and this is our first location we brought into the Bay Area for Enterprise Rent-A-Car. Our, our company provides a much-needed, or, yeah, our operation, uh, like Tracy mentions, five full-time employees, two part-time employees with office hours, seven thirty AM to six PM Monday through Friday. And as you guys had mentioned before, we probably would like to extend those hours, seven thirty AM to six PM Monday or Monday through Sunday if possible, so we aren't kind of hamstrung to those operational hours during, if we want to extend it, that'd be all right. Uh, our company provides and specializes in providing much-needed transport, special uh, replacement transportation for customers when they get to take their car into the body shop. If you get in an accident, your vehicle has a mechanical issue, we specialize in providing replacement through your insurance company or mechanical breakdowns. There's many automotive shops in that area, mechanical shops in that area. You take your car to the shop or right down the street, we'll pick you up, we'll bring you the car. Because a lot of times you need a car, you don't have a car to get to the operation and that's what we provide as well. Uh, as mentioned earlier, we work with the, with the surrounding automotive uses. We'll be working closely together with these shops and become business partners with them. Uh, we don't conduct any maintenance on our property, so we'll be utilizing Midas, Wheelworks, the body shops, the gas stations to use our, to use for being our customer and, and such, and then also be sending their customers to us as well as to get a good, good business partner relationship. Uh, we look to strengthen our communities one neighborhood at a time, which is one of our founding values, which is why we set up these relationships with these community and business partners next to us and also with the surrounding local neighborhood. We'll be providing transportation solutions as well as our truck rental division. Uh, with our truck rentals division, we provide long-term rentals, local businesses to uh, provide them for their ability to run their business. And right now, obviously with the chip shortage, it's very tough to get vehicles and very tough to get truck rentals. So we're able to provide them with a truck they need to run and operate their business, which is very important right now. Uh, also, we provide trucks to the local community for them to use for moving services and trucks and cargo vans and things of that nature. Uh, that being said, we'll be ensuring not to affect any neighborhoods, neighborhood as you mentioned. We run our, our business with a very high occupancy. At any given point in time, we run about ninety percent of our vehicles are on the road, so there's not many vehicles on the ground right now. And also, as mentioned before, we anticipate our, they're using our convenient drop-off and pickup service. We're going to be picking up about sixty to seventy percent slash delivering sixty percent of our vehicles to our customers. So it's going to limit the amount of traffic that's coming into and going from the site. Uh, with our truck rental division, we tend to very lower volume rental or lower volumes of long-term rentals. They can go out anywhere from two to three weeks to a month at a time, they're upwards of a couple of years. So it might be on our lot, we might not see that vehicle again for a couple of years. So it'll be a very lowly impact amount of trucks coming into and off of our driveways. There'll be less trucks in the property. All these factors will significantly reduce, reduce any potential traffic impacted site and surrounding areas. With all that being said, we figure that we plan that enterprise will be a valuable asset to the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding businesses and local committee providing transportation provider to all the local businesses and, and customers in the Campbell area. And we look forward to working with you guys again for the next twenty to thirty-four years and we thank you for your time this evening and look forward to uh, hearing any further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the commissioners had a couple of questions um, on the operational and business public hours. Um, just to be clear, uh, what would enterprise be requesting? You currently got seven to six and eight to two for the operational hours?
I think we'd like to expand seven to six, seven days a week. We may, we may not actually use those full hours, but not having to come back, like you said, to reamend the CEP for adding additional hours on the weekends. We typically have a smaller, smaller schedule because we don't want our employees to work too many extra hours and typically between the nine and two is pretty much our sweet spot of actually when the customers are needing rentals. But sometimes we do need customer rentals on Sundays and if the, the demand is there, we might want to increase to open on Sundays, but it really just depends on the area. So having that additional hours, maybe nine to, or seven to six Monday through Friday would be advantageous for us.
Okay, so, sorry, uh, you said uh, seven to six PM, seven days a week?
Correct.
Okay, and the, that's the operational hours and the business hours? Uh, currently seven thirty to six PM, and I think the comment was there was no thirty-minute um, grace period afterwards?
Correct. So I guess, yeah, adding the thirty-minute buffer on the end of, end of that to give our employees the time to kind of record, reconcile our fleet and get our people out after last transaction would be done. So I, I guess we could amend it to seven to six thirty, seven days a week would be great.
Okay, thank you. And the other item was um, Commissioner Kamkar's question about the gates and after hour, or what happens to the gates, are they locked and what, uh, after hours drop-off?
It really depends on the site and how we operate the location. Once we kind of move into the location, figure it out, depending on the security we do offer after our return services and we do have secure drop boxes we use and utilize cameras as well. So uh, we can, we can have, have had that, so we don't impact the streets and have customers park on the streets or park outside the business if they need to return after hours as a convenience. We would, we would look into that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any, please, Commissioner Craig?
Yeah, just a quick question that just came to me and I must say that there's no demand, but I, I'm, I'm curious as why they're closed on Sundays?
Uh, just, there's typically not much demand on Sundays. The bread and butter of our business is typically the replacement business, which is Monday through Friday, kind of cycles and you take your car to the shop on Monday, it gets returned on Friday when it's done at the shop. On Friday, generally people pick up and take it for a weekend rental. So Sundays, generally there's not that much business for us to necessitate being open and having the personnel expenses to stay open. So we, we have certain locations that have that. Typically, we kind of stagger them throughout the different areas, but it really just depends on the demand in the area, what type of business mix we have. Being this is more industrial area with more body shops, we kind of tend to more the Monday through Friday business.
Okay. Kimko?
Thank you, Chair. So um, I thank you for all that explanation. To me, uh, you know, asking for Sunday is great, you know, just it gives consumer, you know, additional options, you know, if, if you're open. So that, so that's great. Um, uh, now you, you, you mentioned sometimes they rent a truck for two years or let's say one month or whatever. I don't think as a business operator, you would leave that spot to be open, you know, I'm sure you would bring another truck to take that space rather than leave that space open for the guy to return the truck a month or two years later. So I'm not sure if that argument really um, wo- works for me, you know, as far as space being available.
Yeah, with, with the truck rental, they're kind of more planned out, whereas a lot of the car rental business is kind of more volume and then more vehicle transactions with the body shops, whereas a lot of our uh, truck rental is business-to-business, it's based on kind of outside marketing, us dealing with the local companies in the Campbell area and finding out what their needs are. And then we'll be delivering those, those trucks to those customers on sites. So typically, especially if we're only planning on having X amount of trucks, when, and this is a first time in its markets, we don't plan on having that many trucks to open up with.
Sure.
We're not going to want to have that many trucks on the ground. If they're on the ground, they're not making us any more money. So we're not going to want them on, we're not going to want a lot of trucks to be on the ground.
As far as the after-hours um, parking, you know, um, sometimes cars can just park right behind each other and landlocked each other. And then when you guys get there in the morning, you can process as, you know.
Right.
So, uh, so if, so if that provision is open, that rel- relieves the parking issue.
Correct.
From my concern. Um, uh, I think that's, I think that's it. Okay, so I'm okay.
Thank you. Any other, please?
I had a question with California entering a large drought again, sadly, uh, what, what impact does that have and what provisions does enterprise do regionally or even at this new location to save water?
Yeah.
When, when I looked at the plans, it identifies the water goes to the sanitary sewer.
Correct. We, we utilize with a lot of our large national vendors, we work with uh, low-flow pressure washers. We utilize things that limit, limit the amount of water used for each vehicle. So we try to ideally use all those pressure washers that you throw locations and we'll be installing that these location here.
Okay, that's good to know. Does this location replace the Winchester location or it's in addition to?
It, it will be replaced in the Winchester.
Okay, so is it already gone or it's?
Yeah, we're still open right now and then until we can get to the point of occupancy.
I see, understation. I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any? Okay, any, any other members on, uh, public online? Okay, I'll close the. The section and hand it over to the commissioner for comment. I'll start at the other end, Commissioner Kray.
Well, it seems like a good use and that kind of odd location and there is a lot of parking, I, I. Commissioner Kamkar got me thinking and he had a good point and I don't know. If we can legally do that, this, but maybe since there is a lot of parking on the site, maybe we can require. That no enterprise cars actually be parked on White Oaks Road. I don't know if that's, is that a requirement that we can actually do or is that, that kosher? Because it is a tough, that is a tough street for parking. There's no question.
You, you can impose that as a condition enforcement can be very difficult. Especially if you've got somebody dropping, well.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're identified as rental cars. Yeah, I, I, point well taken, yeah, but just a thought.
Uh, I think actually that's a good idea in the sense that. We always want more businesses to come to Campbell, but at the same time, we don't want other businesses to get hurt. And if the parking spaces that other automotive users are using right now is going to. Get taken up by excess enterprise cars. We're hurting existing businesses, you know, and sooner or not, we're going to start hearing from them and. So I think it would be prudent to add the condition, no parking on White Oaks. You know, the, the lot is pretty big and so they can make provisions to any car that wants to be dropped off overnight, you know. Be led into the site. I would, I would support that.
Do we know it? Do we even know if there's parking allowed on White Oaks curb parking at that point?
Uh, curb parking is allowed.
Is there curb parking on White Oaks at that point?
Yes, on one side. And then starting at seven in the morning when those automotive shops open, they immediately. Take those parking spots, which then allows them rooms so for, for the customers to go to drive into their driveways and. Um, and if a bigger use like enterprise rent a car starts taking those spaces up. We're going to start hearing from those businesses.
Okay. Commissioner Rivlin. Commissioners, this is. No, this is, this is the discussion period.
All right, all right. So, um, no, I, I agree. I, I think it's a good location for this. There's plenty of. You know, parking, there's plenty of parking on site. And, and the representative from Enterprise talked about how ninety percent of their. Their vehicles are out anyway. So I guess it's usually a pretty empty lot. So. The only issue I would question is if there's gates and. There's not a place to pull in. I mean, on Winchester, there's a place to pull in, right? And park in the parking lot. So I don't know whether or not they, they actually anticipate an issue with drop off. Anyway, but. Uh, didn't sound like it from their point of view, but I, I guess if there's a, if there is curb parking there and. Of course, I, I could argue that Wheelworks probably, they have a lot of parking. They should be taking care of the parking off in their lot. Rather than doing it on the street. So. I guess I would be in favor of, of having amendment to that to, to not have, have. Street parking for, for enterprise as part of, as part of the approval process. Otherwise, it's a great, you know, it's a great business for there and, you know. Happy to have them continue to be in Campbell and actually add on to, to their truck division and, and. So it, it makes sense, it'll help all the businesses that, around them in terms of supplying services to them. So I think it's a great. Great opportunity.
Thank you. I, I wasn't aware. We were moving to discussion. So I, I think it's an acceptable use of the, the land and there was a. Comment that they're using low pressure on the water and any ordinance would come from the state if restrictions applied. I don't think they exist yet. But definitely want to see that happen. And, and the parking, you know, I, I think it already happens along that street. And I feel like the lot is large enough to absorb the vehicles. What was, help me out fellow commissioners, what was the, how did they resolve at night when the gates are closed? I come in at nine PM and leave my car, what happens?
Well, at night, there's not that much parking on the street, but come seven in the morning. The, 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 the street parking.
But then the gates are open, so I can pull in at seven AM. But at nine PM, I drop my key in a little box somewhere. Then they come out at seven and move the car for me. So.
Yeah, you know, I mean, just having lived there for, for quite a few years. You know, any extra parking, you are putting pressure on the existing business. And it's not just Wheelworks. There's probably. Thirty automotive businesses there. Wheelworks is one of them.
Where I was going is I'm open to putting that restriction in place, but it doesn't sound like there's any way to. Without someone standing there watching.
If I can, if I can address that, um, the issue is, I'm not saying don't put gates there. Gates can be there and then the drivers, the enterprise in the car drivers will have a code that opens the gate. So they can have access. So other people, if vandalism is an issue, they don't have the code. They can't get into the. Gate, you know, or to vandalize the car. So this way, using technology, they can allow. In their own cars be parked in the thing, you know, if parking in the street. Becomes an issue and I can guarantee it's going to become an issue, you know, um, every morning I go, it's, there's not a single parking available on this car.
Why would people be parking on the street for enterprise? I'm sorry, I don't follow the logic.
My, my, my thinking was if let's say they want to drop off the car like at ten PM. And the gates are closed, well, they would park the car.
That, that's fine, but then on, at seven AM when the enterprise employee arrives, wouldn't they move the car into their lot?
Yeah, but I think by seven, those parking spaces are taken, you know, it's automotive.
So can I, can I, can I just, can I have the, I, I'd like to hear from the enterprise guy in terms of their history of. Of this kind of circumstance, what, what, what is the drop off? What's commonly, is, is drop off very common?
Commissioners, this isn't.
But can we get, we can, yeah, we can't ask him to answer a question on this since we're.
We can if we want to, but I'd just like to, um, just recap my understanding of Commissioner Rivlin's point because. Laboring a particular point, you said you're actually okay with putting a condition in. Saying that, uh, no parking could be allowed on White Oaks. Because it might make it a moot point, I'm just trying to think.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Have any extended discussion, right?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted clarification. I'm sorry to speak across the dice, but I, I just didn't understand what the concern was. I'm fine with that. Condition, it may not. Be effective, but I think it's fine to make sure they use their lot efficiently.
Okay.
Well, I'm supportive of this. Approval as it is and the recommendations. I'm not, I mean, the street parking is street parking and it's pretty much designated for. The public, however it gets used. So based on this application, there's. Kind of a requirement of twenty two parking spots and fifty five or so provided. Usually, uh, at least in my experience, rental car returns kind of happen after. Whatever that period is, it usually ends in the daytime and then you have to pay extra if it goes beyond that. So. I, I'm okay adding a restriction, but I also wouldn't propose it. Because I think it's kind of a minimal case.
Thank you, Chair.
I, I concur with Commissioner Strazki mostly. I think ideally either. There would be some provision for nighttime drop off, possibly with some kind of way of badging into the facility to drop off a car. Or having after hours street parking plus some kind of requirement to have the cars off the street by say. The half hour after opening or something like that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that everybody is either. Commissioner Kray, apologize.
Yeah, you know, I would say, but we're talking about this. Condition possibly and the enforcement, of course, is one thing as Commissioner Rivlin said, but also as Commissioner Zisser said, I'm kind of thinking of the issue of fairness. And I guess Commissioner Osrowski was saying that too. We do have a lot of other businesses that already. Have a lot of cars and have free access to the street like, like this comment. So I. I am wondering now a little bit about, about a condition. For seeing something on Enterprise that we're not forcing anybody else. So it's a little bit sketchy, I guess. Trying to think about that. Knowing that, and I, my, my mechanic is there and on that street is right there. So I, I know the street, yeah, it's, it's, it's fills up very fast. And it's really a tough parking situation. I think as a business, Enterprise would, it would behoove them to make sure that they have real convenient. Drop off for their customers after hours on their site too. So you would think that maybe they would be doing that anyway, but. I guess requiring it, I, I, again, I get, I'm getting to the issue of fairness and I'm just. Kind of having second thoughts now.
Okay, so, um, do we want to? Ask the applicant to come back again?
Just, I want to comment again. I just, in, in thinking about it for a while, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Kray that. There's an issue of fairness. It's like, why would we condition them when the other. Uh, the other businesses on the street that are not conditioned and are using the curb. Uh, the other thing is we're speculating. We don't really know what, what the real circumstances would be. That's why we. Maybe like to hear again from Enterprise on what their history is with drop offs and how they deal with it. So. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not excited about the idea of conditioning them now at this point. So, and we'd like to hear more.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing. If I can. Well, well, drag this out. Let's just, who wants to put this condition in? Fingers up in the air. So on that basis, we won't condition it. And.
How about if I just make a motion and we'll vote on it? Okay, so I'd like to. Make a resolution approving a conditional use permit PLN two zero two one dash two one seven to allow a new motor vehicle rental. Use motor vehicle renting within an existing commercial building. And finding the project categorically exempt under section fifteen three oh one of the California Environmental Quality Act. And I think the only amendment that we discussed earlier was to extend the. The operational staff hours by what thirty minutes?
So it was.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
And seven to six thirty.
Seven to six thirty, seven days a week.
So some to six for operational hours, some days a week. This is my, and then seven thirty to six thirty, so thirty minute extension for business hours.
Yeah.
Sorry, the other way around.
Was there not a desk item as well with notation that rental cars could remain on the lot? In addition to what you said, we'd have to read into the desk item.
Yeah. Okay. With the other addition that rental car items can remain on the lot.
Can we get, can we just be clear on, on the hours? It's seven to six thirty PM. Uh, operational hours and seven thirty to six business hours.
Yes, basically we're extending operational hours by thirty minutes, Monday, uh, seven days a week. Yeah.
And Tracy, is that clear as mud or? Do you want to replay, replay that back?
I just want to make sure I got my notes correct. Okay, so for operational slash staff hours, Monday through Sunday, seven AM to six thirty PM, correct? Okay. And then for business public hours, seven AM, seven thirty AM to. Six PM, Monday through Sunday. Thank you. Monday, you said Monday through Sunday. This is Sunday closed.
I think, I think we're doing this in seven days. They may not use it seven days, but they, they'd have permission in the future.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I'm okay with that. Yeah, business hours. Seven thirty to six PM.
I second that.
Seventy.
So the operational hours thirty minutes longer than business house essentially some days a week. Okay, a second motion, thank you.
So I have a friendly amendment. Okay, that's the point of order, yeah, I have a friendly amendment for the motion is. The reason Enterprise is different than the other businesses, the question was asked, you know, we haven't required this from other businesses. They're smaller businesses. They're small businesses. Enterprise is a much, much larger operation. That's why it makes a difference. If they were as small as the other guys, makes perfect sense, you know. But the volume, I think that they do is much larger than what those smaller businesses does. That's why. That's, that's why it was different. But so that's my friendly amendment. You can say no.
Well, I think we took a, a vote on that before because what you're asking for is for the restriction on, on the.
Well, my, right, you know, I just like to add the part that. Uh, they would tell the customers not to park on the street, you know, and use the badge or whatever to park inside the lot. That's the, that's what I'd like to add to Commissioner Ostrowski's motion.
Okay, and do I have? A vote for that, just put your fingers up.
I just, I would just like to know, it's like, do you know that they have that capability? I, I don't know if we can require. Something like gate entry, if in fact, that's not how Enterprise functions their business. I, I don't know.
I think you can condition it. I think, I think you can condition it, you know, it's not like.
Well, it, it's a, to me, it's a, it's a practical matter whether or not that makes sense from their business. The, operating their business, whether or not that, that's something that they can do.
Well, I think.
I mean, I would say from the practical standpoint, if you're going to return a car, you probably want to put it in a safe location where. You're not going to risk it being damaged before the rental agent comes to check on it for you. So again.
Right, what I'd say is that we have the, we have the resolution in front of us. Um, and that was, that meets the applicant's request. Uh, as far as we know, there's no objection to that. Um, so we have friendly amendment to this. Who wants to vote for that? Have that friendly amendment added?
Or is there a second friendly amendment? Because it could die due to lack of a second.
Can I, can I make a comment on that? Like, in, in a form of a question for, for Tracy, maybe Rob. If we just approve this as is, and if it just does turn out that Enterprise results in a parking. Major parking problem there. And if other businesses complain or residents, could we then. Revisit this item and then impose some kind of a. Street parking restriction on, on a business like Enterprise?
That, I'll go ahead and win. I mean, the best approach to this is, is the code requires a amount of parking you have on site and you provide that parking and your customers use that parking. And to Commissioner's point, public parking is public parking. There's usually a tragedy of the commons issue if you try and regulate public parking. Where some regulations on some businesses are not the others. But to answer your question, i- if we had. Multiple complaints that they are causing issues in the neighborhood, um, above and beyond the conditions of approval, like an intensity requirement. Code enforcement would investigate if they're violating conditions, it could bring it back for a revocation hearing. So the best answer I can give you.
Correct. And to add to that, the resolution condition of approval number three. Three A, it does talk about in the event of there are three verified, verifiable complaints regarding parking, vehicle drop off, pickup. Uh, the director may limit the hours of operation requiring greater staggering. Um, so there is conditional language that's currently in the resolution. So we're just speaking to that.
I think that covers the concerns. Like if it's a problem, there's a way to escalate it. And I think we can skip adding complexity on the front end. Just knowing that there's a way that this can be addressed.
Okay, so can we take a vote on the, um, resolution, please?
We did.
We did.
I think we need a clarification on the second for the friendly amendment.
Let's see a second.
There was no second.
Okay. So Commissioner Riffen.
Aye.
Commissioner Sizer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Kray.
Aye.
Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Aye.
Chair G.
Aye. So that passes unanimously. Um, action is final unless appealed and writing to the city clerk within ten calendar dates. Okay, thank you. So. Okay, thank you. So moving on to the third item for tonight, P N N twenty twenty dash ninety, public hearing to consider the request of the Santa Clara County Library District. For property located at thirteen forty four Dell Avenue to allow construction of an approximately eight thousand square foot library. An administrative annexed building, government office and facility. And associated site and landscaping improvements, including retention of existing overhead frontage utilities and removal of onsite protected trees. And a continued share parking arrangement within a butting property located at thirteen seventy Dell Avenue. The application under consideration includes a conditional use permit modification with site and architectural review. Variance and tree removal permit file number P L N twenty twenty dash ninety. The library district as lead agency has determined the project to be categorically exempt under SEQA. And filed a notice of exemption, county file number E N V two three nine four eight. Planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Project planner, Daniel Fama, please, Daniel.
Good evening. This item three is a conditional use permit modification with sign architecture review variance in a tree removal permit for the Santa Clara County Library District properties located at thirteen forty four and thirteen seventy Dell Avenue. Showed here on the slide, the two sites that compose the project site include thirteen seven Dell. That is the library district's current administrative headquarters. The county was allowed to operate this location in two thousand and twelve via conditional use permit issued by the planning commission. The primary site that is subject to most of the activity this evening is thirteen forty four Dell. This is the former site of the post ninety nine facility that was demolished some years ago, and that was purchased by the library district. They are proposing to use the site for construction of a new annexed building. Both of these properties are located in Dell Avenue, south of Posicanda, and back up to the percolation ponds that are controlled by the water district. These sites are also located within the C M controlled manufacturing zone district and the research and development general plan land use district. The elements of the application before you include, again, the conditional use permit modification with center architecture review. That specifically would allow for construction of the new eight thousand square foot administrative annexed building for the district. It would also allow for continued shared parking arrangement with the adjacent district property. In two thousand and twelve, in approving the library district's use of that property, the planning commission also allowed shared use of the parking facilities on thirteen forty four. And this approval would continue that relationship. And then it would also place both properties under a single conditional use permit as it would effectively operate as a single use. Application also includes a variance that would allow retention of existing overhead utility lines. I will get into a little more. As well as a tree removal permit to allow removal of one twenty inch Afghan pine and one fifteen inch Hollywood gin per tree. Here we have the site layout of the two properties. Thirteen forty four is this flag lot property. This is an existing flag lot. You see with the primary portion of the property located towards the east. The proposed building is located up against the percolation pond in a very comparable manner to the old post ninety nine building. The parking that would be provided would be sufficient for both buildings. Currently shown are eighty six parking stalls where only thirty six are required for the new building. The balance of the parking would continue to serve the use of library district staff on the adjacent property. With regard to the design of the new building, it is a contemporary design building. That incorporates metal meshing, aluminum metal paneling and corton plating, as well as expansive glazing facing the percolation ponds. As shown on the top left illustration. With regard to landscaping true removal, as I noted, the application would would allow removal of two protected trees. These are located at the northeast corner of the site, and it would conflict with the building and utilities. With regard to overall landscaping, ten and a half percent of the site would be landscape, which exceeds the ten percent minimum for the C M zoning district. The landscaping scheme would be consistent with both the state's model water efficiency landscape ordinance known as M W ILO. As well as the standards and guidelines for streams, which has very specific requirements for plantings near riparian corridors. To prevent the planting of invasive species. The landscaping plan as well as the side plan configuration also reflect proposed adjustments to the rear interior. Side landscaping requirements that are necessary due to the tight flag lot configuration of the property. With regard to the utility variance, as noted more extensively in your staff report. The city has a fairly expansive undergrounding of utility requirement. That requires new development projects of this type to replace these overhead existing transmission lines with new underground service. Unfortunately, when this ordinance was adopted, there was no contemplation of it applying to a flag lot. The general idea is that a property is required to replace the utilities along their frontage. But the site has a relatively limited frontage since only the access way connects to Dell Avenue. Therefore, to actually require installation of underground utilities would require effectively. Undergrounding of utilities four times as wide as the property's frontage. And unfortunately, due to P T A requirements that came into play after the San Bruno disaster, it's much more difficult to actually achieve this level of undergrounding. We've had several projects that in order to achieve the undergrounding require installation of additional poles. So you still have a net increase in polls, which is all to say that it is something the city will likely need to reconsider following a new general plan. With regard to review under the California Environmental Quality Act, the library district, of course, is a public agency. And under the law, they are the lead agency under SEQA, meaning that they have to ascertain their own SEQA determination. As noted in your staff report, the library district did commission an environmental analysis by David Powers and Associates. Which was supported by some additional supplemental reports, including a bird assessment by H T Harvey. Based on that assessment, the county library district J P A board delegated authority for the SEQA determination to the county librarian. Who found the project to be categorically exempt. The county duly filed a notice of exemption with the county in April, which began, which began a thirty five day statute of limitations against legal challenges. And no challenges were filed. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission take the following action. Adopting a resolution approving the conditional use permit modification with sign architecture review, the variance and the tree removal permit. And I will also point that we did have a desk item that was forwarded to you this morning. That desk item includes a revised page one of the conditions of approval, that is exhibit B of the draft resolution. And that also makes reference to updated plan sheets that the library district submitted. Those sheets reflect some site changes and minor architectural revisions that attempting to address the Audubon society's concerns regarding bird collisions with the buildings. And with that, I will take any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Kam.
I go first. Thank you. Question regarding the undergrounding of utilities. So if they're not going to do it, are they going to pay an in lieu fee?
No, there is no in lieu fee structure currently.
Why not?
Well, as I noted, this is a much more expansive issue than the single project. Likely moving into the future, we may look at narrowing the scope of the undergrounding requirements to likely only the major boulevards where it's. Actually feasible to underground the whole street. But for now, unfortunately, there's no mechanism to functionally require it in movie.
I have a follow on to that. Why is this not like a sidewalk in any other neighborhood where the cost of the sidewalk gets put into a escrow of some kind for the city? For future installation.
Well, generally, if you build a new house, the homeowner is actually required to install the sidewalk at their own cost, fully.
Right, but there are neighborhoods in. In the San Tomas area that. Have stretches with their new construction, they have stretches without sidewalk. I remember items coming before us where the owner was required to put a fund together for future. Construction and public works would hold on to that.
There have been circumstances where the sidewalk work was deferred to future date. That was not really funds. That was just an obligation that encumbered the property so that in the future, ten, twenty years from now, if the neighbor develops, then. City would require installation of the sidewalk at that time.
That's a good explanation. Thank you. But why wouldn't that apply to undergrounding of utilities?
That would likely require a pretty comprehensive rework of the entire ordinance. I mean, that could be a policy decision of the city council, but probably exceeds the scope of what could practically be applied in this situation. And again, the idea here is the concept of proportionality. When that ordinance was created, the idea was that you would underground the utility lines in front of your property. Which makes sense normally if you have a wide property, but here you have a very narrow frontage and it's just grossly disproportionate by magnitude of four.
But that's why you pay the in lieu fee for your portion. So if everybody pays in lieu fee for their portion, then B G N takes that money undergrounds the whole street. That's, I thought that was the whole idea of the in lieu fee.
And again, we unfortunately do need a complete revamp of our undergrounding utility ordinance.
Daniel, thanks for the explanation on the ordinance. Who's funding the library project?
Well, that would be a county project, county library district project, but we do have county library districts draft.
So it's taxpayer funds?
My understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Craig, I think you were.
I just, just have a couple of questions. And I guess one of the big issues is the bird, I'll just call it the bird issue. And I know that the. The county, the library district did a real pretty extensive. Study, and then we have, you know, real distinguished experts on both sides, and they've apparently been failing to come to an agreement over the course of the past year or so. But. My one question would be. If we did, if we required a full, if we did require a full E I R, would that add any information to this on this bird issue that isn't already? Provided in the existing studies?
Well, since the city is not the lead agency, we cannot require any E I R.
Okay, we can't require it. Well, I guess most of my questions might be for the applicant and the and the Audubon Society if they, if they're here, so. I'll hold those off for then. Thank you.
And just for context, I mean, the revised sheets that were sent this morning largely do address the Audubon society's concerns. There was just one last issue that was noted in the second desk item. The Audubon society did request an additional condition of approval. But given the extent of changes that had already been made and lacking any specific nexus to ground that condition of approval in. The city zoning code nor general plan deal with birth safety, nor there is a city policy, it would be a bit arbitrary. As said, the library district has indicated that they would be amenable to these changes voluntarily. And those types of changes can be made administratively by staff following planning commission action.
So just, sorry, I just, so that the issues have been resolved between?
They have been largely resolved.
Oh, they have? Okay. Well, great. Thanks. Good, good to hear.
So just trying to understand that a bit better, Daniel. Are you saying that we couldn't put it in as a condition? And the reason for asking that question is that at the moment, both sides seem to be amenable to having this as a solution. But something might change during the development. And the applicant may change their mind. So is, just to be clear. We can't put a condition in there to, for this. For the changes as typotentatively agreed but with the Audubon society.
I mean, Bill can interrupt me here, but broadly speaking, conditions of approval need to be. They have to be warranted for the commission to actually approve the project. That without the condition, you could not find the project consistent with the findings or the general plan or the zoning code. And that without it, you would have to deny the project.
Right.
And that's not the case here in staff's opinion.
That's because there's no nexus to it, as you say.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we are looking at birth safe design policy as part of the new general plan, and the Audubon society has provided feedback on that.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioner Sis.
Yeah, first of all. Wasn't clear to me. It looks like you've got solar on the roof, but it wasn't like obvious. There's something in the, in the details of the drawings. Is there solar on the roof?
It was indicated as an optional feature, and the district staff can speak to that. There is no requirement for a project of this type to have solar, however.
So we can't require solar?
Kind of goes back to the nexus requirement unless there's something very clear in the code or for some reason it's necessary to find consistency with general plan policy. Yeah, otherwise it becomes arbitrary.
So on the, on the. On the. On the orientation of the building where the window side is facing the ponds going east. It looks like it's very windowed. It's like totally windowed, right? So, so I don't understand. I guess one question I have is, is that energy efficient? Is there going to be a lot of sun? It seems like a lot of sun's coming into there. And so I, I'm, that's not my area that I understand very well, but in terms of energy efficiency of the design. And, and then another question I have is. It looks in Sark like they asked a question about the back fence. There's a, there's a. There's a chain link fence around. The pods, you know, per the water district. And it was asked whether that would be retained, and they said, well, they have to have a fence. But you've got this, I'm assuming reasoning, part of the reason for putting the big window area facing the ponds is you get a nice view of the ponds. And but, but then you're like seeing a chain link fence. So I guess my question is, would they, would they be considering? If you have to have a fence, you don't have to have a, 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 a great chain link fence, maybe. I mean, we have places on, on the trail where, you know, where there's apartments and condos where they've put up nicer fences. That are attractive and would seem to me that. The employees here wouldn't be wanting to look out the windows and see chain link fence five feet away from them. So, so I have a question about that as well.
So if I can, if I can answer, I mean, with regard to energy efficiency, as Commissioner Kamkar did indicate, and that is the east facing elevation, so it has less sun. Plus, there are energy requirements of the building code that any project, including public projects, have to abide by. With regard to fencing, I mean, to your point, I would imagine they would want some sort of transparent fencing. The water district does want fencing. It is a site development feature, so I suppose the commission could. Look at requiring upgrading fencing material, perhaps wrought iron that would still be transparent. And that's something that the applicants could also speak to.
Okay. And so the other thing about the birds, you've mostly, you've mostly answered it, but I guess I, there was a lot of stuff in. Audubon was, had a lot of issues. So it sounds to me like what you're saying is that you've met. The vast majority of. The, there's an agreement on vast majority of the Audubon requests with possible exception of one or two items.
That is my understanding, and that is mostly reflected in the updated plan sheets. Unfortunately, there was a little bit of miscommunication. Those sheets had been prepared late last year, but we only received them, I guess, yesterday.
Okay, is one, is one of those things about the question of using the opportunity to do, be an educational. Nature thing that the library would do, being that they're. At the ponds. I know that that was one of their requests. I don't know if that's. Is what you were talking about before. It's like they were requesting that the library. Make it an opportunity for educating people on nature, since they're going to be right there.
Well, I mean, library district staff can speak to the programming of the building. I mean, from the city's perspective, it's functionally an office building.
All right. I think that's all the questions. Couple quick, quick ones I'm thinking of. So what is, is the, is it the twenty five foot habitat zone? Is that the issue that's outstanding? Or what's the issue that outstanding?
Higher threshold of bird safety. That threat factor, and unfortunately, that's starting to get beyond my personal level of expertise, but. We do have representative of the county districts, environmental consultant from David Powers and Associates on the line, should the commission have any questions?
Dan, do you know how far? I know the Audubon society, or when they were asking for a twenty five foot habitat buffer between the. Ponds and, and the building. What, what was it with the American Legion post? I was in that building a few times. It was pretty close to them.
Yeah, the building pretty much had the same footprint as the proposed building.
Oh, okay, so it's not twenty five feet.
And there is also distinction too. I mean, these are percolation ponds, which is different than the actual native riparian corridor of the Little Scott of the South Creek.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, please. Pleasure.
Thank you. So in, in your opinion, given that the outcome here is there is a essentially a driveway and we're not going to require people to underground utilities for a driveway. Is it reasonable to agenda is fixing the undergrounding ordinance to exempt flag lots in the sense? It seems wrong to require a variance here. It seems, that seems like a simple change. I know that staff has been interested in. Making like as we go along, fix it changes for things like this as they come up. I know that uh, staff has been interested in um, making like as we go along, fix it changes for things like this as they come up.
So to be quite frank, the um, the section of code is probably one of the worst. Um, and it's not easily tailored when it's that bad. Once you try to break it open, it most likely just starts to collapse and it really requires a comprehensive update. Um, is the more you just add exceptions, you add more complexity. Unfortunately, believe we do have at least two additional applications that will be reaching the commission at some point this year that also have comparable variances. Not only is the aspect of proportionality an issue, but we've also found, and this is true of projects in the past. And when you require the undergrounding of these utilities, run into situations where, let's see if I can get this to zoom. A requiring removal of the pole further left now impacts other adjacent private properties. So if you start removing poles, you may have to actually then go on to those private properties, replace their overhead service with new underground service. And it starts to get very complicated very quickly. Um, unfortunately, this is not the first of this type of variance and won't be the last, but again, it does speak to you. I need to do a broader revamp of the whole code section.
So it's essentially spaghetti and we can't like make those changes at this point. Understandable. Uh, is there a plan to uh, fix that is like, is that on the agenda for the next like year or two to try and redo that?
Robbie, committee of all director. As the commission knows, uh, we do have a full work plan. Uh, and we do need to prioritize objective standards, but I'd say we have a three-phase approach to updating our zoning ordinance at minimum. Uh, once we get through the initial phase of objective standards, this would be in the second or third phase.
Thank you. The other question, um, I had some trouble understanding the um, the desk item. Can you give a summary of what the the late changes were that made this acceptable to the Audubon Society? I I know that the materials have an an appropriate threat level, but was the the large glass, but the large glass facade, as I understand, is still there. Is it that they added some kind of coating or like? What what exactly happened?
If I recall correctly, much of it has to do with lighting. Uh, but as for the specifics, I'm afraid I'm not fully versed on those changes against, we do have library district staff that can speak to them. Fortunately, those revision sheets came in very late. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Thank you, Daniel, for answering that. Open, open it up to public comment. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? And for the record, if you could state your name.
Good evening. Chuck Griffin, uh, financial and administrative services manager for the Santa Clara County Library District. I'm joined with Brett Stonework, who is acting as the project manager in a consultant capacity. Uh, so this project, um, uh, we did actually have a lot of communication with Shawnee Feinhaus from the Audubon Society. Several months ago, we met with her to uh, hear all of her concerns. Um, and we addressed each and every one of them that we could possibly address. So principally that included adding some frit to that east facing glass that faces the Perk Ponds. We accomplished that uh, in the design phase, and that's one of the the items, I think, in that desk item. Uh, also, uh, reducing the uh, the Calvin output of the uplighting and the surrounding lighting of the building. So that was accomplished. Changed out all the um, uh, planting around there to 100% native species, um, uh, based on the uh, native plants society's request. And uh, a lot of this unfortunately was late to getting to uh, Ms. Kleinhouse, but I had a phone conversation with her yesterday and I provided her the information that's provided in uh, the material they received this morning. And she was very thankful for that. She had one other request, uh, right now, the, I believe it's called the threat factor uh, of the 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 glazing on on the glass. We have it 25, which is within the standards that they normally approve uh, or or recommend. Um, they'd like us to do a lower threat factor of 20. We're totally agreeable to do that if it's available. And it's not not outrageously expensive, uh, but we assume there's maybe other things with lighting by the time this project is going that we can even improve on. So we're meeting her in all the ways that we possibly can. There's another question regarding education component of the site, since it's a beautiful site along the Perk Ponds. We've been in discussions with the county parks that sort of operate uh, the the trail area there. Um, and so we're working on um, some consultants for not only some interpretive panels or something like that, but also opening it up to the Parks Department to use for educational purposes.
Thank you for working with her and getting all the Audubon Society asks into the program.
I was gonna ask about the educational element. When you had phrased that, you'd said people, could you not necessarily rent the facility, they could on certain occasions come to the facility for a learning experience? Is that what you were implying?
Yeah, absolutely. The the principal uses for the reading program to uh, to provide reading tools for low literacy adults. But there will be plenty of opportunity. Uh, we've, we've uh, you know, basically told the Parks Department for the county that, you know, we've had this available to you should you need.
That's very interesting. I I hope you move forward with that or find a way to make it available, maybe not every day because it's an office. Is that it's a function?
Yeah.
But maybe um, charitable events or specialty learning lessons for local schools. Um, I have a six-year-old in the Campbell Schools, would love to have her both understand the library system, but also, you know, connect to the nature there. And then as far as the threat factor goes, um, it, I think you said it, but just for clarity, you're willing to accomplish the 20 that is in the desk item. Even though 25 is what you are proposing?
Right, the the 25 is the, I think, was in the desk item. The 20 was just a more recent request from yesterday.
Okay.
Uh, but I I basically explained that we we are on board, we're on the same page with her goals, and so we'd be happy to entertain that.
Okay. Those are my only questions right now. Thanks for presenting all that and sharing your communications. Thank you.
I just wanted, I had the question about the fencing, whether or not you're considering, I mean, you have this beautiful building. And and then you've got this, you know, ugly chain link fence, you know, right in front of it. And so whether or not you've been considering working with the, with the water district, I guess, or to to replace that fencing.
Right, you hit the nail on the head. We'd have to get permission from the water district, but yeah, I'd like to have something a little less prison-like, I suppose.
And the other thing is, is just, I I just walked that area today and and the the problem, the problem is, is that that particular section, there's no trail right there. It's very close to ponds and it's it's actually fenced off, which is unfortunate. So there's no real, you have to go either a half a block down or a half a block up to get access to the pond. So it's unfortunate. It would have been nice if you actually had access. But I I guess there's nothing they can do about, but I think the fence would be a nice improvement. It would be a start for that whole, I I hate cyclone fence.
Yeah, I, yeah, great. Anyway, thank you, Commissioner Osowski. Questions?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for for all that work. I know there's been such a, so many experts have weighed in on it, especially in the bird issue, but uh, so to be clear, the the Audubon Society Sierra Club, they asked for a 25 foot setback and it's not doable according to your project, right?
That's correct.
And that's too bad. And that's kind of what we're talking about with the fence being right there. And that's too bad. That wouldn't work out. How about the uplighting? Is the uplighting still in the project or?
Yeah, that's been reduced and we've agreed to turn it off at certain times of the evening.
It'll go off at 11, excuse me, it'll go off at 11 o'clock P M. And uh, the only lighting that'll be on after that would be an emergency lighting and that would be located inside the building.
Okay.
Emergency exiting or custodians or things like that.
And it's fair to say, you know, your design tries to take advantage of the great views on the ponds. But and with with the light and the and it also almost creates a little bit of a bird issue, so it's it's too bad you got this, but this is a side effect of it. Is that kind of the situation you guys were in? And it was just a tough, you had a great design for the views, but not so great for the birds.
I think we did a really good job on on making a a good place for the birds. Actually, I mean, the lights are going to go off at 11 o'clock. I mean, we're not going to be disturbing anything at night. The frit on the glass is a super important item which we achieved, and I think that is the biggest concern because what that does, if anybody doesn't know, is it, it stops the reflection. So
If you could, uh,
I'm sorry, it stops the reflection um, into the glass, which could be the mountains or a pond. And so the birds don't see that and think they can just fly right into it. It actually eliminates that. So there is no reflection, so they can actually understand that it is something that they can run into. And again, the lighting issue is is kind of the lesser of the evils, if you will. And I think we've achieved that by being off at 11 o'clock and that won't, I think that's for the uh, the mating season is what they're concerned about.
Do you think that the, I don't know, that the library district as a governmental agency was almost held to a higher standard in a way uh, for issues like this or or does this come up? It's a tough question for you guys to answer on one project, but it hasn't come up here like this. So I don't know if this is a common thing that comes up with.
I don't think we were held to a higher standard. I think it's a policy in 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 a several cities, for instance, Cupertino. It's a dark skies issue. More folks are being educated on actually, you know, how to provide a better environment for the birds. The frit glass is a huge, huge thing. I I truly believe that's going to save a lot of birds because that's that's the number one killer.
Okay, all right. Well, yeah, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Bless you.
Um, I I noticed this came before the site and architectural review committee uh, more than a year ago. Um, what delayed the project?
Between COVID and trying to address the uh, the bird situation, we wanted to take our time with that and make sure that we're doing the correct thing. And also COVID just slowed everything down, as everybody knows.
Okay, I was I was concerned that that it was entirely the the bird thing that had had delayed the project this long and that.
No, not really. We just took our time and we made sure that we did the right thing.
Okay, thank you. That that makes a lot of sense. No further questions.
I've I've one or two further questions.
Sorry, no further questions from me.
I I heard it earlier and it it piqued my interest. Where did your project decision end on the solar that's shown in some of the diagrams?
Well, the solar, um, we have the infrastructure for the solar and depending on the project budget, and as everybody knows, everything has just gone crazy. Um, we would love to do solar and pretty much guarantee at one point it will be added. Um, if we can do it during this phase, it would be wonderful and that's what we'd like to do, but.
It's a beautiful looking project and from a, you know, a sustainability point of view and just future proof. I think, well, make sure it is fully set up. Obviously, I think you said that, but if possible, go for it. I'm not I can't mandate it, but do it if you, if at all possible. And then I I thought of something else, um, obviously, personal reflection here. While we await our Campbell library across the uh, park here from City Hall, uh, perhaps there's a way to uh, keep Campbell engaged. We do have our temporary library at the community center. But um, if this beats the uh, city library, um, maybe there's some way to engage the community in addition to what I already spoke of, but you never know. Maybe our city library will speed up and it'll beat your annex, but it'd be great to keep, keep um, our community engaged in the county library system.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Um, just clarification, I'm looking at um, page 105, which is showing the plan view. Um, and in the parking lot, um, there's a, the center parking section, it shows a divider in there with trees being planted. I think one, two, three, four, five trees. Um, is that right? Because I also saw a picture and it had no central separation and no trees there. Could you clarify that, please, if there's trees being planted in the the center of the lot, basically?
I'm I'm not sure I understand your question. I'm sorry, there.
Yeah, um, if we, uh, it is possible, I think, page 105.
If I, if I, I think I understand what you're asking. I just saw it. I believe that center is is for water collection. That's one of the ways we're handling onsite water.
Right.
And that would be where it's collected and there's uh, there's filters in there that would be needed to be cleaned periodically.
Okay, yeah, I'm, my eyesight is there's trees to be removed?
Oh, there are some trees that are in there currently, but they're they're dead, you know, they're just dead trees.
Right, so, okay, so a question is, in, there's a lot, that's quite a large open area with no shading in there. Could trees be planted in the center to hide?
I think that's where we're putting um, the water collection, uh, bioswale, if you will, but I'd have to see to make sure the drawing again.
Right.
Because that's how we're dealing with the onsite uh, water from the parking lot to drainage.
Yeah, I think Brett, he's referring to the revised site plan that had been provided following this SARC meeting. I think it does actually show some trees in the center drive aisle. You zoom in anymore.
It says trees, six inch trees to be removed, five, six inch. It's very faint, that's why I missed it. So it implies that there's trees there to be removed.
There are currently trees there, but they're, they're, they're dead.
Yeah. Yeah. So
They're in a, like a a concrete planter, if you will, and.
So could trees still be planted there and you could still have the um, water runoff?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to the architect.
Within the desk item that came this morning at nine AM or something, the plans, uh, and it, I think it was on the screen from Daniel a few moments ago, it's planting plan L seven point zero one. It represents five trees listed as Platinus resmosa, which is a sycamore in in that central island. I can show you my computer if you want to see it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it has a proposed project installation.
As part of the?
Is is Daniel, are these some plans that we received this morning?
Yes, this is the desk item. So this is the revised plans that were prepared by L P A in response to the Audubon Society's comments. So these actually do show some trees in that center drive aisle.
And with approval of of or potential approval, this even these would be codified as you have to build this.
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's what I was looking at. So that's the same.
Okay, that's great because um, that helps a lot. And then on the the second question, um, to form that plan on on 105, uh, which is um, um, looking, looking from the top downwards, um, so well, at at the top of the building, you're removing two trees. But uh, so I understand that, and the only way, I guess the, you could move the building down to avoid the trees, but you would impact the parking area. So the parking area below is shown on this on the south, um, in orientation of this picture, uh, you have no trees there. Could you put some, there's nothing stopping you using one of those spaces there or two of those spaces to put additional trees in? Is that correct?
I'm not really sure. We're pretty, we're pretty tight. The parking spaces were needed. And I don't think we can eliminate any at this time. We pretty much.
You've got seven parking spaces over requirement. I understand. I think surplus of seven, seven parking spaces.
Well, I'm not aware of that at this time, so that's could be, it's been, honestly, it's been so long and there's been these last minute changes. Um, there wouldn't be anything stopping us, that's for sure, as long as we had the parking spaces.
That is correct. So the um, the adjacent property was deficient by 43 stalls. And the side is overparked by 50, though that actually already did reduce by one based on the SARC revised plan. But regardless, they do have a balance of still, um, six stalls that they could theoretically lose.
Okay, so that could be an option to use up a couple of stalls there and put the two trees which have been removed, you could put two additional trees to replace it in those parking lots in those parking spaces and we'd still be
Correct.
Still overparked. Yes, thank you. Those are, that were the questions from for myself. Questions?
One quick one, if I can, Chairman, just, I I know it came up. So the building itself is going to be used for offices and for the reading program. Is that it? And how many, about how many people will?
Yeah, that's correct. We, uh, up to 10 employees, meeting a, you know, 15 to 18 tutors and tutor pairs.
So mostly the reading program and offices. I just wonder how much the public access for that, the great views, uh, is there, is it a public building?
It is a public building. Well, it's it's not a library, but it is available for the public to use and we'll be considering that as we go forward.
Thank you very much. Do we have some question?
Yeah, we have online comments. Annie Yang is going to be allowed to speak, two minutes on the clock.
Hi, Annie, if you would like to speak.
Good evening, Chair Ching and Commissioners. My name is Annie Yang and I am the Chair of the Environmental.
Annie, you are on, if you would like to speak.
Can you hear me? Hello? Are you able to hear me?
We can't hear you. I don't know, are you on mute? It doesn't look like you are.
Hello, are you able to hear?
Annie, we can't hear you. You might want to look at your sound settings.
Are you able to hear me now? Hello?
Okay, Annie, I'm sorry, if you can hear us and you get your system fixed, I'm willing to open up the the public session again during the debate.
It says she's muted. Is there a way to show muted remotely?
Are you able to hear me?
There was a telephone number you can dial into as well, I believe. So if it's not coming through on your PC, you could call in on your mobile. So I'll close it again, Annie. If you can hear us and you want to rejoin, then please send a message or call in and I can open up the public hearing. Don't see anybody else requesting, so at this point.
Could I propose she type her her comments, or is that not allowed?
No, it would not be transparent of us to allow for chat, chat or Q and A on the Zoom session, because not everybody watching would have access to that. So we've turned that feature off.
Yeah, I understood. I just, I feel it's important we hear because her comments are from the Audubonists. She wrote the desk item, or I think penned it. So I just wanted to give her a chance to speak.
Yeah, I think we ran into an issue before that, so turn off comments. But completely open, if Annie can make contact with us, then I'll open it up again.
There is a phone number on the confirm webinar link that she received via email that she can call in. We can access, or she can send an email to the planning commission directly on the email address listed on the agenda. And we'll forward those comments to you all and include them in the public packet.
Which point I'll close the public hearing. Hand it to the Commission. Commissioner Ruvlin.
You keep putting it down at this end, okay. Great looking project. Really commend the county or the library division of the county for putting this together and taking the extra step to go back and forth with community stakeholders and responses. So thank you. And then I give you a lot of other items and comments in my own inquiries. Really do want to see the solar and really appreciate the application of the fritting. And I believe I'd really like to be vocal that we do our best to accommodate bird safety and light safety, or dark sky, excuse me, which have been raised, obviously, and we're all seeing it. But if at all possible, meeting that threat, threat twenty, I think that's what it's called. I'd be open to that. I looked up what the glass looks like. It doesn't seem too much different from twenty five. But if it really does make that impact and there isn't a dramatic cost, I'd like to see it done. The the project looks great. Would love to see added trees. Thanks, Chair. That was a great find. So I support added trees either in our motion or in kind of the director's, you know, discretion. If there are those extra parking stalls, why not add in a kind of area? And I would apply a native species if at all possible. And I'm sure I'll have other comments, but I think the project's going to be a great success and glad it's in Campbell.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, I I support much of all of what Commissioner Ruvlin said. And, yeah, I think, I mean, just my editorial comment, it's a lovely looking building. It's, I just, I'm sorry, it's stuck behind much buildings off of Dell Avenue in industrial area rather than being out on our corridor or something. But I realize that in theory, people will see it from the trail, but it's pretty far from the trail. So that people might be riding and walking by and three hundred yards away, there's this nice looking building. But so it looks to me like a great opportunity. I'm a big fan of the library, the system having been on the Civic Improvement Commission, and we got to understand library system better. And and it's a great system. It's probably one of the best in the country, as far as I can tell. So, yeah, it's our taxpayer money, but I'm assuming they budget for it and we're okay there. But I, you know, my only other comment is is the back fence thing and and and, you know, encouraging the solar thing. I don't know if we have to conditional, I don't know if we can make that a condition to change the fencing or not. But I would certainly be in favor of 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 a change in the in the fencing deck there primarily for the benefit of the employees. I think, I think, I can't imagine I'm sitting there looking through cycle and fence. So so hopefully you're thinking about that, and I I'm certainly in support of the project. That's all.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Chair Ching. We have, I believe, Annie called in online if you'd like to reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'll reopen it. Hopefully, Annie, you can hear you.
Good evening, Chair Ching and Commissioners. Are you able to hear me now?
Annie, can you hear us?
Are you able to hear me? Hello?
Yeah, okay, it's not connected. I'll let you know if I get her reconnected.
Right, okay, an option, then whether this is permissible. She's more than welcome to call my mobile on speaker. Is that?
Yeah, why not?
Hi, Shrop.
Maybe she could just call one of our cell phones and we can put it on speaker. Would that qualify as public?
As long as we can hear it in the microphone, but I was trying to call her telephone that popped up, but her number has dropped off.
I'll give you my number.
I don't have a way to contact her.
So I have contact information. I'll try and reach out to her and if that's possible, share my cell if she comes through.
I think that's probably our last resort at the moment. So I'll close it again. So just picking up on Commissioners, this is a point, which is a great point, right? And this came up at the study session before we joined the Commission, if memory serves me right. And this is probably a question to Daniel. I think the fence isn't in the auspices of the libraries. It is, that belongs to the water district, so.
Well, if it's a property line fence, they're both a party to it, so they would need to coordinate.
Okay, so, yeah. And so I don't think we can condition it, but I completely agree with what you say. Commissioner Ostrowski?
Oh, yeah, I think this is a really fantastic project, so well done on pulling it together and 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 working with the Audubon Society. I think it's very important, given that it's right adjacent to, you know, the nature near the creek and everything, that that we do everything we can and set an example. There's been a lot of talk. And then I also noticed that it looked like there was only one bike locker storage and two bike racks for two bikes, and that just seems low. So if that could be increased, I think that would be a minimal investment for another impact as another benefit, especially since the employees might enjoy having their bikes, especially in that location. So thank you for all your hard work.
We've reset our sound system. Would you like me to try Annie one more time? Annie, if you can hear us, can you please unmute your microphone?
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I apologize for that. Good evening, Chair Ching and Commissioners. My name is Annie Yang and I am the Chair of the Environmental Action Committee for the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. And I work with Shawnee Klein House, who unfortunately couldn't attend today. SCBA VAS is dedicated to protecting wildlife and habitat and specifically minimizing the dangers of the built environment to birds. We've been following this project for the last year and we're very pleased with the new design. We'd like to thank Campbell Community Development Director Rob Eastwood, Campbell Senior Planner Daniel Fama, Santa Clara County Library District Financial and Administrative Services Manager Chuck Griffin, County Librarian Jennifer Weeks, and the other planners and staff for listening to our concerns and amending the building plans to incorporate native plants and landscaping, lighting that protects the environment and dark sky and bird safety measures. As already mentioned in our review, we asked Mr. Griffin if the design can use a stronger bird safety protection product. And we also asked if the library district has any opposition to including stronger bird safety requirements as an additional condition of approval. Mr. Griffin was supportive, as he has stated earlier as well. Therefore, we hope that tonight the Commission will add a condition of approval that requires where bird safety treatment is applied to glazing, the product achieves an American Bird Conservancy Threat Factor rating of twenty or less. The current product chosen in the plan has a threat factor level of twenty five. So a threat level of less than twenty allows the selection from a wide variety of products and provides good protection for birds and reduces the risk of bird collisions with glass surfaces. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Annie.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your persistence. So tap it away. So I'll close the public comment and Commissioner.
Yeah, you are. This is really such an educational process, I'll tell you. So I've lived in Campbell thirty five years and I'm a runner. And where do people run? I've probably ran there, I don't, let's say, two thousand times without exaggerating. Never knew it was a bird. It was a famous bird watching area until this item came up. And I read those, I read those reports twice, believe it or not, every word, and it was so fascinating. I had no idea, and I know there's a lot of nice birds there, but but it is very cool. I thought the project was was great when I saw it. And then and then I got to the bird issue and I saw that there's a lot of issues there. And but you can, you know, work it out and I think everything's great. I think it's, I think it's a good project. Off board, I I think Commissioner Ching's item about the trees was good. The fence, at least a dozen years ago, when they put up the fence that blocked that that path. I used to go by that American Legion post building all the time. And believe me, a lot, there's a lot of people that will see the building a lot better because of its orientation toward the perk ponds and the paths, and they went on Dell Avenue. But it's too bad that they put that fence up there. I admit it is terrible, but I don't know if there's anything we can do there. I think more bike locker are good. And I do think that we want to make sure when we when we make our motion that we do have the bird safety threat of twenty or less. I think library district's fine with that, so I think we want to do that because it's really, at the perk ponds to the to the to the bird community, it's the Oka Ponds. That's off of Oka Lane. And again, something I didn't know until this item, so very cool. Thank you.
Just if I can piggyback on that, I I was under the impression that we couldn't condition that approval because we don't have, I think the phrase is a nexus for that, like something in the general plan that says that you need to have a ABC threat factor of a certain level. Like, we can't really justify that. I mean, it's it's really good that the applicant is willing to do that, but my understanding is that we we can't require that.
We can't require that?
Well, I'll say it this way, Daniel's absolutely right. We don't have ordinance or general plan guidelines on this, which probably will change. But if the applicant's proposing to incorporate it, you could say, as proposed by the applicant, it shall include this factor. You could even add, if feasible, if it leads into some financial infeasibility, just to go ahead and put a bow on it, given that both the Audubon Society and the library district are in agreement. A condition like that should be fine.
So, so, Director Eastwood, could you say that again in terms of what we should be adding?
Well, I'd recognize that, you know, as proposed by the applicant, the, I can't remember the wording. Need some help, but the the glazing shall meet the bird threat factor of twenty if feasible, which could provide some protection to library district if they find out it's not feasible to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner Kamka.
Vice Chair. I'm glad this project's being brought forth. I think this would be a really nice addition to that part of town. I I think it's really impressive, the degree of cooperation going on between the Audubon Society. And I think it's really impressive that the library district is taking them so seriously and really trying to be a good, I guess, partner to the environment in that area. I was I was concerned that that this had delayed the project for more than a year, but it turns out that's not the case. So I, this, this sounds excellent. And I I hope, especially going forward with the general plan update, we'll have better, like, clearer standards for this for applicants in general, which I think will make everybody a lot happier. Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of this project. I think it'll be a really nice thing going forward and it fits very well exactly where it is. The only thing I would suggest is maybe adding some room for more bikes. I think there's one bike rack on there. I've spent a lot of time biking up and down the creek trail there, and it looks like it's not that far off the creek trail. So hopefully people can bike there, but who knows? But bottom line, favor the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, great, great design, super design in favor for this. And congratulations to everybody working hard to find a resolution. So so, yeah, really looking forward to this. There were some comments from the Commissioners on additional conditions or at least some wording. I just want to make sure we capture that. One I've got here is additional bike rack, I think.
Yeah, it's a storage locker and bike racks. That's that wording is storage locker and bike racks.
Okay, then there's the addition wording, as proposed by applicant threat. The laws to be installed if feasible to reduce the threat factor to twenty or below. The third item, and just looking for Commissioners, if we're aligned on this, is to use a couple of car parking spaces for trees to be, I would suggest on the, just looking at this map, on the southeast sector of the car park. So effectively, that would replace the trees, lose a couple of spaces there. I think there was one other, which I missed. Was there any other points? No, there wasn't a fence.
A recommendation for solar and electric vehicle charging, if possible.
Okay, I don't think we can condition that, can we? So that was just.
Yeah, as the advocate indicated, they are pre-wiring the building for solar. And under Cal Green, the parking, these still should be pre-wired for EV chargers.
Okay.
That's already contained. And also, just as a reminder, any motion should also make reference to the first desk item, which includes the.
That's already contained. And also just as a reminder, any motion should also make reference to the first desk item, which includes the, um, revised condition sheet and these revised plans.
Okay, so who do I hear? Brave person volunteering for a motion here to add the following parts, additional storage, uh, storage locker and bike rack. Wording as proposed by applicant, glass to reduce the threat factor to twenty or below. Uh, two car, two car parking spaces um, to be used on the southeast part of the parking lot, uh, to be replaced, to be used for, uh, two trees to be planted. And, um, revised condition sheet.
I'll give it a try.
Um, I believe, uh, it had been suggested that we add an if feasible to the, um, thing, but if feasible.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is in terms of the desk item. So the desk item includes the revised condition sheet and the revised plan sheets.
Okay.
Well, I move that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution of approving a conditional list permit modification with site and architectural review variance and treatment removal permit to allow construction of an approximately eight thousand square foot library administration annexed building. Government office and facility with a continued shared parking arrangement within a budding property. Reference attachment one plus adding, uh, the revised condition and plan sheet in the desk item plus adding the condition of, uh, that the proposed glading, glazing meet the bird threat, bird threat, threat threshold of twenty or less feasible. That the project include a second bike locks, bike locker and bike storage facility. That the project remove two parking spots on the southeast sector and to be replaced with, uh, trees. We don't say what kind of trees, I guess.
At staff's discretion.
Yes, at staff's discretion. And I think that's it.
Well done. I think you got it.
I would love to second this motion and I have.
Thank you. And could we have a, a vote on it, please?
Commissioner Rivlin? Aye. Commissioner Caesar?
Aye.
Commissioner Shrosky?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bookbinder?
Aye.
Chair Qing?
Aye.
So that is passed unanimously and, uh, this action is final and is to be written to the city clerk within ten calendar days. So thank you. Looking forward to it. And thanks everybody again for working so hard on this. Great project. So this finishes the last, um, item. Um, so, uh, Director Eastwood, do we have a report?
Just a few quick notes. Uh, I do realize the written director's report didn't make it in, uh, but we'll make sure we get it next time. To the, to the commission, uh, city council did adopt the budget, uh, last Tuesday. Very significant achievement happens every year. Couple of things of note that came into community developments budget that will affect the work plan and of course affects items that come to you. Uh, we, the city council put a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget to fund Nexus studies for inclusionary housing fee update and a commercial linkage fee. You'll remember that was part of the housing program and that funding went into budget as part of the housing program. That was one. Two, uh, two hundred thousand dollars and to start developing some both short-term and long-term economic development strategies and that might evolve into policies and programs that could come to the commission. Twenty-five thousand dollars for a downtown parking study. This is important. We propose this, uh, right now. There actually is a requirement in downtown to provide parking spaces, uh, which is a bit non-intuitive. So this parking study would, uh, provide for, for, for folks to provide in lieu fees, uh, that would go to collective parking or parking garages rather than building on onsite parking in our downtown. And then finally, uh, allocation or authorization to hire for our billing official position. We've had an acting billing official for the last two years. So those are some of the more significant items. A couple of other just quick reminders, our housing element is still out for public review. Uh, last day for public comments is July eleventh. Uh, if we do get significant comments and do any substantial changes to the document, we probably will bring it back, uh, to you. The, the commission and council haven't made that determination yet, uh, but the, the comment period runs until July eleventh. Uh, last notes, again, very happy. We have, uh, Ken Ramirez with us and he'll, he'll be providing service to you going forward. We do have a planning technician starting on July sixth. Uh, her name is Ishwara and she's going to help out a lot, uh, with just keeping the flow of permits going through our office. Last but not least, uh, I'm looking for at least one more volunteer, uh, to trek down to Orange County. Uh, if you'd like to go to the American Planning Association California Chapter Conference, we do have one volunteer, Commissioner Kamkar. Uh, we have funding for at least, at least one more. Uh, so think about it. It's October first to fourth. Uh, we have funding available and it's a great opportunity. So uh, we do want to lock in the hotel a bit early because they go fast. Uh, so if you could, uh, get back to me, probably by next week at the latest, we'll go ahead and make reservations. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Just picking up on that last item, um, Commissioner Zissin, I don't believe you've been on the course and I don't think you're obliged to, but, um, it'd be good to know if you would be, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, um, if you don't want to attend or can't make it, then we can open it up to other people.
Yeah, I, I wasn't, yeah, I haven't responded. Like I, I would not be interested in going. Yeah.
You wouldn't, would not be.
I mean, I've been to a couple other seminars. I've been to the virtual one last year and, and, uh, to some of the planning, your meeting recently, so.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm not, I don't travel well, so.
Okay, thank you. So.
Beautiful Southern California.
No Disneyland. Okay. So that opens it up for, for anybody else here, um, and not, well, if she wants to, but, uh, Community Development Director, like.
I would be interested in attending that, uh, tentatively. I should double check saying, but I don't see any reason why, like beginning of October should be a bad time for me. Um, I had one other question. If there, did you have any other things to mention on the, okay? Uh, so if we have, say, if we have notes on the housing element, I've been, uh, reading it, especially on, for example, constraints analysis. If we feel something has been missed and should be included in the program or something like that. Do we just mail planning with our notes?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that.
With that, I'll close the, uh, this meeting, um, until the next regular planning commission meeting on the twelfth of July. Thank you, William. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.